I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 22th meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. The prayer tonight will be given by Alderman Bingle.
Thank you Mayor Outlaw. Tonight I have invited Bishop Ron Scott of Refreshing Lives Ministry. He is also the Chairman of the New Bern Housing Authority and a New Bern native and just a godly wonderful man. So will you please bring prayer for us this evening?
Now we all volunteer some prayers. Eternal God, Creator of all, dear wise, powerful, and all-knowing. First let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the full measure of help we need to fulfill our callings and our assignments. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. You say in your word in scriptures in Romans 13:1, "Everyone must submit himself into governing authorities, but there is no authority except that which God has established Himself." And those authorities ought to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, right now I pray for our mayor, for each alderman, the city manager, and other city officials and their families. Father, do what only you can do. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflict and interest and issue that faces this city. Grant them a sense of welfare and true needs of the people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy while doing what you have blessed them to do. I pray for the agenda that has been set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what will please you and what will benefit the people who live in and work in this great awesome city of New Bern. It is in Jesus' matrix name we pray and give thanks. Amen.
Which is your pledge of allegiance to Black Mark 3? My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am, clerk, would you call the vote?
Alderman Bingle?
Here.
Alderwoman Harris?
Present.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Outlaw?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Present.
Alderman Odom?
Here.
Okay, so the agenda, everybody get with the agenda before we get going. Let's do the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second? Motion and second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Item number five.
Good evening Mayor Alderman. The next item is discussion on the extraterritorial jurisdiction. This was originally tabled at the January 25th meeting and I'd like to ask the city attorney to start this conversation.
Yes, members of the board, you'll recall from last month, we were entertaining the idea of whether or not the board wants to remove any or all parts of the existing ETJ areas. Alice is here and she can refresh us. Alice, if you wouldn't mind just taking us back through the various ETJ zones around the city.
So the areas, whatever kind of range, either are we to go? This is ETJ area here, ETJ. ETJ area along Duck Creek, Township 2. There's ETJ area, Barwood, Grove, and mostly along the western part of the city limits, or adjacent to the city limits.
And as I recall, there was a tiny, a tiny portion across, south across the Trent River, just up between the city and the highway?
Yes, there's where Outback State House is, there's a little piece there as well. I don't have a mouse, so there could be...
Gotcha.
So there's a little piece here where the Outback State House is, there's ETJ. And then again, inside of Township 2 where we don't have city limits, there's ETJ. And then the Duck Creek here, we have ETJ.
Yes ma'am. Members of the board, just to refresh you procedurally, if the board would like to remove any or part of the ETJ, we would go through a public hearing process where we identify the area that you direct, have a public hearing to discuss the pros and cons, after which the board could remove that area from the ETJ. And I believe the statute provides that if the county doesn't step in and do something after 30 days, it's thereafter removed, meaning it becomes part of the county without any city regulation whatsoever.
Question.
Yes ma'am.
So if something's removed from the ETJ and down the road, especially in the Bridgeton area where we have some people that have annexed into the city, some have not, so let's say we removed it from there, could they still come and request annexation even though it's not in our ETJ?
Good question. ETJ is separate and apart from whether a person can petition for a voluntary annexation. You do not have to be in an ETJ to request annexation. And your other question might be, if you, if a future board changes their mind, if you remove a section from the ETJ and a future board wants to put it back, yes, they just follow the statute and they can put it back in the same place or a different place.
Scott? Any other questions?
Scott, a lot of this area looks like it's undeveloped, assuming that they would need utilities, they would then have to, based off our policy, if they ask for utilities, they would have to be annexed, correct?
Yes sir. Yes sir, just to get everybody on the same page, if you are not located in the city and you require city sewer or city water, a condition to getting that service is that the property owner would petition you, ask you to annex. Doesn't mean that you have to accept that annexation, but as part of providing the sewer and water service, they would have to ask you to bring that property into the city.
The one research I've not done is that since virtually municipalities cannot involuntarily annex for most part, is there a need for ETJ versus years ago when you could annex and you were basically essentially years prior to you were preparing that area for future concurrent use with other improvements in the area? So is there any trending information on what cities are doing as far as ETJ since the general assembly pretty much prohibited anything other than voluntary annexation?
Great question Mayor, I simply don't know.
Nor do I. And in some areas where the county used to provide permits prior to an area coming into an ETJ, the complaints I get in ETJ that are sent to development services are normally the usual nuisance abatement issues, improper permitting or improvements lacking structural integrity. But we really, even with ETJ, don't have any true jurisdiction over situations where something was permitted by the county prior to the ETJ taking over. Would that be a fair statement?
That's correct. That's correct, yes sir. And, and a point you're raising, which is very common is, we'll have a subdivision that's approved by the county, because it's not in the city, in which case the developer will be subject to the county development standards, after which that project may request to be annexed into the city. So we've now got a project in the city built to a different set of standards, so that happens fairly regularly.
And while there's no particular revenue generation from areas being an ETJ, there are obviously resources that the city expands on yearly basis to enforce zoning requirements in those areas, but probably have a figure on that either.
Mayor?
Yes ma'am.
Attorney Davis, how long has the Rocky Run community, that ETJ area, been within the city? I mean, the city had...
Yes ma'am, Alice can tell, I think Alice can tell, I don't want to put you on the spot, Alice, is it early 90s?
I think it was 1990s, yes.
Yeah.
In the 90s, it was, I've been here since the end of 2000 and it was before I got there. That area's starting to come into peace now?
Yes.
So I believe Rocky Run area was in the late 90s?
I was, I was here, I mean, I remember.
Yeah, I know that there were big concern when they did the 43, they had ETJ or some kind of control in the place at that time.
Yes, best guess, we did it till late 90s. I'm impressed.
Scott, I have a question. Since it's been a residential community, within I think, within the last four to eight years, it's been more individuals purchasing property to build businesses out there now.
Yes sir.
So and I think that's what have brought this here to be a big question here about.
Yes sir. Alice, can you overlay zoning, can you overlay the zoning on that 17 South corridor?
Not from here, I cannot, but I can pull it up.
I'm sorry.
I can pull it up, I can't from this side, but I can pull it up.
I'm sorry, Alderman Kinsey, I was just gonna offer an illustration to your, to your point, if Alice can pull it off.
So, so the question lies here that it's less houses being built and more companies wanting to come in and build.
Yes sir, I, I think that's what's, what's caused a bit of the, the concern in the, in the 17 South corridor, is you've got residential zone, folks that grew up there, lived there, still live in those homes, yet there are businesses adjacent, across the street, nearby. So it's an area that is clearly in transition and, and the question is, for you, the political question is what to do?
Sorry.
You do nothing, it sits the way it sits, residential zones, stay residential zones.
Mr. Davis, if, if we did away with ETJ hypothetically in an area like the western part of the city, would potentially, what could and could not River Bend do as far as extending there to ETJ?
Either...
Because I think there was a bit of a mutual agreement about this lines when, when that happened.
Yes sir, neither city, neither New Bern nor River Bend can come closer than the midpoint. So each can go meet to the middle. And River Bend, well, that's the general rule, either party can consent to a further extension. So New Bern could, could allow River Bend to come closer to New Bern for the ETJ with the board of...
So if New Bern did away with ETJ, River Bend could take over some of that area?
They couldn't, they could come to the midway point, but they couldn't come past without your approval.
Do you know if River Bend has zoning?
Oh yeah.
I imagine they have some minimal level of zoning.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you Alice.
There's, there's the corridor that we're... And they have an ETJ also?
Yes sir. A little smaller, but it wouldn't matter, they're a smaller, smaller town, so they can't go as far, but I don't know that the one mile, I think they're probably under the one mile rule, New Bern has the three mile rule. So they might be limited to just one mile and I don't know, as the crow flies, how far north up 17 they could come from their furthest point.
My question is, how many new homes have been built in this corridor here that we're just, that we're talking about within the last four to eight years versus how many businesses have moved in?
Yes sir, this, Alice has got a nice map up for us. You can see, Alice, where, from that main body of C3 where that A5 hits on the, on the right side, what is, what's that property, just so we can all, oh, that's, that's the Rocky Run Road, that's Rocky Run where it...
That's Rocky Run.
Yeah. If you can see the southern piece of, as you look at this map overhead, you'll see the A5 zone in the top right corner? That is the intersection of 17 and Rocky Run Road, where it starts its loop. So you can see as you travel south, you've got C3, R10, some A5, and R20, all along that corridor. And that's what's, I think, presenting the issues that everyone is struggling with.
So is this discussion on item five about a particular area or whole this, all ETJ of the city in New Bern? Or is this a kind of a situation where different aldermen geographically might have concerns that they want ETJ and others might have considerations where they don't want ETJ?
Mayor, I just, it's my understanding that ETJ is supposed to help soften the difference in being outside of the city versus being inside of the city. If you go back, Alice, I keep flipping my, go back to your zoning map, if you look at the Dr. MLK Junior Boulevard, everything that's pretty much in the city along that, for the most part, is commercial. And then you have a couple of these residential areas that's on the outskirts. So if the philosophy behind ETJ is to make the outside the city mesh with inside the city, I don't know that this is accomplishing that since the inside the city is mostly commercial.
Alice, can you, in case you could show the city limit line on this map?
Wherever you see zoning at is, let me see, it should have actually...
I think it was up, Alice, on your menu.
So wherever you see red, red line...
Gotcha. Yeah, how about sliding that cursor, so that, that kind of helps everybody understand when you technically leave the city.
for zoning and...
It would just disappear.
They can do what they want to?
Yes sir. Yes sir, when you, when you remove the ETJ, you remove all of the regulation in that area.
And you likely can move, eliminate some, but not, not all if you don't want to, you can remove whatever you want to.
Yes sir, yes sir.
Attorney Davis, you said that if this is something that the board is inclined to do, there will be a public hearing to hear from the community, because there are people that are...
Yes ma'am, this is, this item is just to get some direction, do we quit talking about it? Or do you want staff to schedule a public hearing in anticipation of that and to take that step? Staff's gonna need some direction as to what area we talked about, all ETJ everywhere? Or just in certain locations?
Well, Attorney Davis, my, and board, my stance on this is that if you're gonna, the ETJ for the Rocky Run community, these citizens have been under the city for as the ETJ is concerned for zoning and permitting for over 32 years. And if you're gonna take the EC, ETJ from the Rocky Run community, I feel you should take it from all the other areas within this city, within the ETJ area. And that's the way I feel about it and I don't feel, I'm, I'm gonna be frank with you, I'm not gonna vote yes on this, because if you're gonna do one area, you need to do all the other areas. You need to take it from under the ETJ for the city.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I have no issue with what you're saying, Alderman Best. My concern has been all along is the staff time and issue and everything going along and, and you know, we don't, no one pays taxes and the services that we have to provide in that area without the benefit. But I agree that if we're gonna do it, it should be across the board or not at all. So I would concur with you on that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seems like if you're gonna do it for the Rocky Run communities, like you're forcing these individuals, these citizens to annex into the city to get some service, and I don't think that that is wrong. And the other unfortunate is we've had an incident where the Rocky Run communities come out here for a hearing in regards to a developer wanting to come in and, you know, do things with the trees, and if we didn't have these regulations, that individual could have bought that property and did whatever they want with it. Am I under...
Yes ma'am, exactly.
Okay. So even though they may not pay taxes, we have a lot of amenities that individuals come and use and they don't pay taxes. So I think that, you know, this, this is something we really need to look into, so we're not kicking the can down the street. But I feel, you know, if, if we need to move it past to where we can have the community come out and speak and, you know, property owners, business owners come out and speak, I think that's the point we need to get to before we make a decision.
So you just want direction?
Yes sir, staff just needs some direction.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm all in favor of having the public hearing and go from there.
And with the, with the notice to provide that all, everyone in an ETJ, because we have to send notices out to everyone, so if we're on the same page, then we would send a notice to every person in every ETJ.
Correct.
And give them a chance to show up and give you, give you their thoughts.
Correct.
Okay? That's what I need. Are we all good?
Good.
Is anybody object to the direction to proceed with that hearing? Is everybody good with that?
In the information that you send out, you explain to these residents why we're having a public hearing, correct?
Yes ma'am, the statute requires that.
Gotcha.
Anything else on item number five? Let's go to item number six.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern. At this time, I'd like to ask Tiffany Askew, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority, to present her request.
I want to thank Mayor Outlaw, Alderman Bingle, and City Manager Hughes for their support over the last weeks to get us to this point of this resolution. I would also like to recognize my board chair, Ronald Scott, and board members that are here and the staff of the Housing Authority that are in attendance. While we realize that we should be further along in this process of moving Trent Court forward, since my arrival, I have found several items that we need to complete so that we can see some progress in the area. One of the things that we need to complete is the environmental review process, which the city may act as a responsible entity to complete this process on the behalf of HUD to ensure that there are no adverse effects to the environment for this project. This is a HUD and FEMA requirement that this process is completed and we'd also like to make it known that we've worked with the local historic commission before any approval for demolition of this site. And the next item following this joint resolution between the city and the Housing Authority would be to complete a MOA, and the city would act as a lead in this MOA with FEMA and the other local entities so that this resolution would be in support of that MOA. And on last night, the Housing Authority's board did approve this joint resolution. So that's what we're looking for from the Board of Aldermen tonight. And I have with me also the agency's city attorney, Mr. James Norman, and also our development consultant, Mr. Reginald Warner, if you have more specific detailed questions that you'd like to ask in regards to this request.
I have a question, did the board vote unanimously?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And then what, what got you to this point of needing the partnership with the city in regards to this part of the process?
The environmental review process, HUD recommended that the city act as the responsible entity because the city receives HUD funds, and with that being said, the city can act as an entity to complete this review on the behalf of HUD office. So HUD led us to request this of the city.
So the Housing Authority does not receive HUD funding?
We do, but this review has to be done by another party, which can't be, can't be done by the Housing Authority. So HUD has recommended that the city complete the review.
Okay. My question is for Scott, can you explain to me what this process is about?
Yes ma'am, big picture, to qualify for the funding, they have to go through this process. Process has to be performed by an outside party, a responsible party. There are several options, but New Bern is effectively the default option, we're kind of the, the last entity left to sign off on this. So the, this agreement provides that the Housing Authority will cover all costs associated with the review, but the city will effectively be in charge of it, the report will come to you, so that we're separated to some extent from the Housing Authority in, in the process.
And who is doing the reviewing of the, are you hiring a consultant?
So the, the city is the responsible entity and so the city will make the decision on the party that would complete the review.
And so that would be a consultant that does that? City staff would not have anything to do with that part?
And that's gonna be a consultant outside of Cory, the one that is already our consultant?
That's correct, yes, that would not be the FEMA consultants we use.
Okay, and so putting out for the consultant, how does that work?
I'm sorry.
When you put out and seek for a consultant, is it gonna be in the same steps that we do for like Stanley White and...
The, the HUD part is not the same, or, or the, yeah, the HUD part is not the same as the FEMA. When we did the FEMA part with the Stanley White Recreation Center, they, they may well have to go through that, that process at a later date, but they're working through the HUD process with the environmental review at this time. So that, based on what we went through with Stanley White, it's nowhere near as detailed as the FEMA process on, on what they're having to go through for this first phase.
Okay, and this step is so that you could determine whether you can tear down the buildings?
The review is done to make sure that there's no adverse effects to the environment, so pretty much.
Because of tearing down the buildings, the demolition, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So I, I have a question, so how does the MOU come in effect with this for it?
I'm sorry.
For this project for, is the, I'm not speaking of the environmental aspect of it, I'm asking from a MOU point of how is this gonna be involved with any, is this in conjunction with the CNI implementation grant? Does this all correlate together here?
It, it's not a part of the formal CNI implementation grant, this is HUD environmental review process. And the MOU that you're, have before you tonight is where the city agrees to be the responsible entity, the Housing Authority agrees to pay for it, and that you will proceed forward with the environmental review. You're not approving the environmental review because there is none yet, that'll come later. You're not entering into any other kind of contract other than what's required by the regulations.
For the environmental portion of it?
Alderman, Alderman Best, this might help you, so you know, for three years now, they've been trying to get these buildings taken down that have been flooded and damaged. And we kept asking, what's going on, what's going on, what's going on? And when Ms. Askew came on, she found out that these steps had not been taken. And this is a requirement of HUD, to get the FEMA money to tear down the, the buildings. You have to go through this HUD environmental, am I correct? But you have to go through this process, and this process was never done. So Ms. Askew came in, realized this, and now these are the steps that HUD is saying you have to take. So that's what it has to do with, it doesn't have to do with the grant or anything else. This is just trying to get the funds to tear, to tear them down and rebuild, would they be the same funds tearing down and rebuilding or is it two separate sets of funds?
It would be the same.
It would be the same set of funds, okay.
When you tear these buildings down though, you've already accomplished recreating these buildings when you did the Carolina Avenue somewhere. Right, so when we tear these buildings down, unfortunately, because through Hurricane Florence, it was a travesty what happened to that community, what's the plan moving forward for those buildings or for that area? Because the community is under the assumption that there's gonna be waterfront property built there and that we need to talk about transparency. And the main issue that I have is that I didn't receive this MOU, this information until 9:25 this morning, that the people didn't even get to see this. And that, and that is a lack of transparency, regardless if it's something very easy, simple, I don't want to personally vote on something that as I'm sitting here, I would have to be... I would have to be, the city is taking the responsibility without fully digesting and getting all, all of my questions and things answered. I kind of feel like rushed, oh, I got to figure this out. You know, un, unfortunately, I have to work a nine-to-five to provide for my family, so this is not something that I can dedicate my time to in the morning. When we get it on the weekend, I have the ability to do that. So, I would personally think or feel that this should be tabled to the next, next board meeting so that there can be a true understanding of what's going on, on this application in this process, so that I can have a true understanding, especially when it's dealing with FEMA, because we've had issues in the past with misinformation with FEMA.
Is it, how time sensitive is this?
I have to defer to the Housing Authority.
Just speaking from the Housing Authority's perspective, if I may, that, uh, we have federal and state agencies waiting on us to take the next step, and they're not going to proceed with their review until we do so. Uh, so, time is of the essence. Is there a deadline? No, there's not. Um, so.
Well, then I have to concur with you, Alderman, um, Harris, that, you know, why is this such a rush now? And we received this document today. You haven't had a chance to review it or anything. And I just feel that if we, we have an MOU here, just like we had for the Union Park part, and we had our citizens here that could voice their concerns, I think we need to have the same, this same process should be addressed to our citizens, so our citizens can have their concerns and their questions answered as well.
I think we're misunderstanding what this is, Alderman.
No, I.
I believe, I, well, all this is, is a request, all this is, is a request to do an environmental study at, that's required by HUD, by HUD.
To tear down the buildings.
They, they are, HUD is, this is a step, and it's just saying that we would be the, I guess, responsible entity over this process. The funds, the Housing Authority would pay the funds, uh, anything like this. This doesn't mean what's going forward, it doesn't mean the buildings come down because of this, but it is a step that has to be taken to move the process forward.
Can we hear from the consultant for just a moment?
Sure.
About this, because, you're right, yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, I'm Reggie Barn, and I'm, I'm working with the Housing Authority, and I'd be happy to, to try to address the concern. A, as indicated previously, what, what transpired is that the Housing Authority submitted an application for demolition of the Trent Court after the flood. HUD approved that process for the demolition. Once we began to review everything, what we realized in that process, and what HUD realized in that process is, they approved the demolition of Trent Court units that were damaged without the environmental review being completed. And so, what we're doing here, and while I understand the concern, I want for clarity purposes, just to explain that the environmental review is not affecting the ability of the citizens to have input on what does and doesn't happen to the development in the future. This is, this is simply a SHPO, a FEMA box check that addresses to make sure that there are no environmental impacts or concerns related to the site, just, just to simply get the approval process for the demolition of units that are no longer occupied and no longer will ever be occupied. The process for us going forward as it relates to redevelopment, and that is one of the reasons that, uh, Ms. Askew mentioned in the process, that as we go forward with the demolition, we can't, even if HUD, when HUD approves the demolition, nothing can still be done until the Housing Authority comes back and works with the HBC to make sure that from the Historic Preservation Commission, because these units are in a historic district, that we go through the local process to get all of their approvals. This is simply just to get the environmental review process, which technically has really already been completed without the full process of the approval. So, we, we just simply need the approval for the environmental review process.
Right. So, and, and I completely understand that.
Sure.
So, to, just so people know, when I ask questions, I'm asking because there's people that aren't here. Okay. So, um, who has the final, um, approval of the, um, of this, this process? Who, who, who checks off that it's okay?
Okay. So, I want to go back if I could for you, Alderman, and to provide the additional clarification. So, what happens is HUD, from a federal government standpoint, is the entity. Because you all, as a city municipality, receive CDBG and other government funds, either the city or the county is that entity that can be the responsible party. As, as mentioned, from a default standpoint, because you all receive those federal funds, what HUD generally does is defer to the local government to be that responsible entity. So, what will, what will happen is, what we're trying to facilitate here is a memorandum of understanding that simply says we work together to accomplish this goal. And in doing so, the, the city ultimately, when that report comes, is brought to you all, and it shows no adverse actions, and then it comes back to you all for final approval. You all accept that, you give it to us, and then we submit that in an application that goes back to the Special Application Center in Chicago to get the final approval. Then the ball starts rolling all over again, because then we have to get local HBC approval to take down buildings in a historic preservation area and FEMA. And FEMA.
Okay. And, and for me, I think that that's what doesn't sit well with me, because the, what we have is we have a mayor that's able to appoint people to the Housing Authority Board, and we're separate. So, now, we're bringing us together to, we're bringing us together to work together, right? The MOU to work together in regards for this, this environmental assessment. And then we also are the responsible party, and we also have the final say on whether there is an issue or there isn't an issue.
The report will identify, the report will identify that, that we will go. I, and I, I don't.
But the, uh, the consultant is going to be going through us, even though the Housing Authority's paying for it?
That's correct.
The, 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 the environmental review is approved ultimately by HUD and FEMA. If they're not going to approve it, then it's not going to go forward. And it'll be approved by them before it comes to your board. Um, and it, you're not approving any particular development of that site. It's literally just the environmental review of what's there now.
So, the review is going to go to HUD, right, and FEMA, and then it's going to come back to us?
That's right.
Okay. I, that, I don't understand. So, if you need this approval to move forward, why would they already approve it and send, why, why would it matter if they've approved it to bring it back to us?
Well, this is the beginning of that process, and they have to review the results of the environmental review. And whatever that review shows, they will work with the Housing Authority to resolve any differences or concerns or questions, and then we're submitted to the city for a final, um, sign off.
Okay.
For the environmental review part, not, again, for the whole project.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
What's the next step? After this?
If you approve the resolution?
No, no. After, once this process is done, what's the next process?
You mean the environmental review with HUD, FEMA?
And then after FEMA, and then after you go to the H?
HBC.
Right. What's the, what's the next step?
The goal ultimately is to redevelop the site. And, and, so I want to go back to your company. One of the things that we recognized when Ms. Askew came on board and the authority brought me on as a consultant, very candidly and very openly, as you talked about the transparency, we looked at and said, you all have, as a community, done a lot of work already from a standpoint of redevelopment and goals based on the community, uh, neighborhood, choice neighborhood initiative. And so, you also are going to look at making additional application on behalf of the community. The community needs redevelopment. We all would agree from that perspective. And so, because of the efforts that have been taken, we took the five-point transformation plan and said very clearly, this is a great starting point to begin with. The community was brought together in 2016 prior to the 2019 flood, and a lot of work was done in 2016 to put that together. So, from my perspective, from the board's perspective, it's why reinvent the wheel. Let's start with the document that we already have, that the community has buy-in, and let's build on it from there. That's our objective, and so I want to address that. Our goal is to redevelop quality affordable housing back in the community. Should that have a component of mixed-use housing that is workforce-related? Because we focus on those at sixty percent of AMI, but we also need to focus on those people that are working-class individuals that are between that sixty percent and eighty percent of AMI, or around that eighty percent of AMI as well. And so, our goals are, is to take the CNI long-term and work within the community, but using that five-point transformation plan as the beginning point. That is long-term, not for what we ultimately need here. But to answer the questions and the concerns is, we're not throwing the baby out with the backwater. We're starting with the document that you all already have, that we think has good bones to it, and then let's, as a community, build from there.
Right. And in that part of building, you are going back out in the community, because that was 2016. Some of the people that were a part of that are no longer living, and the demo, the demographics have changed. So, I know that we always utilize the CNI, but some of that information is, i, it needs to be amended and, and updated.
Absolutely. And that's why I say it has good bones to it. And what we've been doing, as Tiffany indicated at the beginning, in working with the city and, and, and you all, is we're looking at lots within the community. So, we've been driving, uh, looking at lots within the community. We providing that to your planning department to make sure all those lots suitable. What can we build there? How can we help enhance based on design characteristics that can go back into these communities? So, yes, ma'am, very clearly, we're taking all of those factors in consideration. We're looking at all of the available sites within that area and making sure that the long-term planning goals meet what the needs are that y'all started with back in 2016. While it may be different in some capacities, and the people may be different, but the goals are the same, and that is to develop quality affordable housing within that market area.
And just last question sent through here. When, when this does happen, there are still Trent Court communities that are there that have not been damaged. So, what happens to those individuals?
So, if you go back again, uh, and I, I use that as the framework. If you go back to the framework in 2016, you all, as a community, already had some goals and objectives around the entire site. And so, our goal is to come back and take a look at the entire site and look at what is the highest and best use for the overall redevelopment of the community. Uh, is antiquated? Uh, if you go in Trent Court and some of those units, there's a lot of things that need to be done to make quality affordable housing.
Absolutely.
So, our, our goal is, is to develop our entire master plan of redevelopment for that four-region. We didn't want to talk about that in particular tonight, because again, as you said, that's a public hearing. That's where you get community input and those kinds of things. So, I didn't want to cloud the simple discussion tonight of the environmental review with the bigger, broad stroke, uh, redevelopment for that site.
Unfortunately, the waters are tainted, so that's the why these questions are being asked.
Sure. And I appreciate that and value that. But, but we would respectfully ask for your reconsideration of tabling and ask for your support, uh, tonight for, because that helps us continue this process. FEMA is waiting on us. You all have a lot of money on the table that has been delayed since 2019, and we are very candidly and openly just trying to get them the correct documents in hand where we can begin to move this process down the road.
Alderman, another term of question.
Um, yes, sir. The buildings that have been substantially damaged, they're inhabitable, correct?
That's correct.
Or have they been condemned? I mean, you can't live in them, right?
You cannot live in them.
So, they've got to be demolished?
Yes, sir.
This process has to be completed in order for them to be demolished?
That's correct. But we still recognize that, the caveat to that is, besides the other approvals, we still have to come back to the local HBC to make sure we still get their approvals as well.
Thank you.
No other questions? May I, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Motion carries out number seven.
Next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance to annex thirty-four, thirty-six Old Airport Road. Evie and Iris Tici have petitioned the city to annex a one-acre parcel. In the township seven, the petitioners plan to build a single-family residence on the property and recently entered into a water and sewer use agreement with the city. This request for annexation is required under that agreement. After conducting a public hearing, the board is asked to consider the adoption of an ordinance to annex the property.
Mr. Hughes, just out of curiosity, and we talked about this a little bit, I talked about it with one of the Alderman's the other day. Has, uh, public safety been involved in this annexation, and do they agree that it wouldn't be a burden on public safety?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah. In the future, when we do one of these annexations like that, can we add that public safety's approval, or if public safety has been, you know, um, consulted and make sure it doesn't provide a burden to public safety?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting a.
Public hearing?
Excuse me. I'd like to conduct. Any other questions, comments, before we go on to staff, or making comments? Um, at this time, we will have a public hearing, um, associated with the annexing of thirty-four, thirty-six Old Airport Road. Anybody that'd like to come forward, ask questions, make comments. You're welcome to do it at this time. About deciding.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing is their discussion. CNN, all in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I oppose, second. Now, can we adopt the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the ordinance to annex thirty-four, thirty-six Old Airport Road.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, let's go to, I, number eight.
Next item is to consider a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for eleven-oh-six Broad Street. Curtis Stewart has submitted an offer of five thousand four hundred dollars to purchase this parcel. The tax value of the point zero six acre parcel is ten thousand eight hundred dollars, and the offer represents fifty percent of that value. The property was acquired jointly by the city and county in August of 2017 through tax foreclosure. The unpaid taxes, interest, and penalties due to Craven County at that time was one thousand fifty-one dollars seventy-seven cents. Unpaid taxes, interest, and penalties due to the city was two thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars fifty-five cents. And the city also had, had attached a demolition lien in the amount of six thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-six cents. If the property is sold for the initial bid, the city is projected to receive three thousand five hundred thirteen dollars ninety cents, and the county is projected to receive one thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars and ten cents from the proceeds, less the cost to advertise.
This property is located in the redevelopment commission area, which was voted on, and they agreed, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Mr. Attorney, I know I should know this. I asked it, um, before, but the cost to advertise, is that split between the city and the county?
It's returned to the person, the entity that paid it.
Okay. So, then nobody's out of that, then?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, so this is the parcel right beside, um, the, um, old Morgan's funeral home?
Yes, ma'am.
Morgan's Morgan funeral home? Okay. So, he's going to be using that parcel for parking? Or what uses? Do, is board aware of what use would be?
I spoke to the redevelopment commission and, um, you know, didn't, had a couple of things. Could, he has par, he has enough parking on site, is what he said to the redevelopment commission, but he could, uh, the house is so big, it's really almost bigger than the lot size. So, one of the comments from one of the commissioners was, having a little bit of yard would probably help the house, um, potentially. So, those were some of the comments from the redevelopment commission. But it was unanimously voted on.
Mayor, if there's no other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for eleven-oh-six Broad Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. CNN, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes. Motion carries out number nine.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving an updated strategic plan for the Fire Department. I'd like to ask Chief Boyd to come up and, and discuss this. I'd like to ask Chief Boyd to come up and, and discuss this.
He just stepped out.
He's assisting someone down the stairs.
Um, you wanna go to the next slide while we're waiting, or do you, what?
You wanna just go on to the...
Yeah, we, we can go on to the next one.
Let's go to item number ten.
Okay. Next item is consider a resolution approving a conflict of interest policy for federal and state grant awards and sub-awards. So the city recently had applied for a CAMA grant. Uh, we were, we were awarded that grant for a, for a, an extension of the boardwalk at, uh, Lawson Creek Park. As part of that, they informed us that our current conflict of interest statements and policies were no longer in effect and that cities across the, the state were having to go through a process to update this. So in order for us to see, receive those federal and state grant funds, this is just a process that we have to go through.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution approving conflict of interest policy for federal and state grant awards and sub-awards.
Thank you. Motion and second is their discussion. CNI, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, I guess we go to a point while we're waiting, uh, Alderman Odom, appointments? Excuse me, Bob, Bobby's back, let's, I mean...
No, he's not.
No, he's not.
No, no, no.
Now he is. Too bad you weren't here, we just...
You ready? I'll get back to item number nine. Mr. Hughes, would you like to start adding?
Yes, sir, so, um, the fire department has recently updated their strategic plan, and so this time I'd like to ask Chief Boyd to come up and talk about some of those updates they have for this.
Well, this has been, I have to carry people down the steps, so we're getting a bit out of breath. This has been a plan we've been working on, as you know, in two thousand seventeen. We voted on this plan, and we started on this one just a while back. And it's involved, it's what called community involvement. We actually did a, um, a community survey. We, we had business leaders come out, we had community leaders come out, we did a citizen survey. And basically, a strategic plan is, is how we can match up what the community expects from us. So what you're seeing here is what's the outcome of that product, and we're hoping that it'll be for the next five years to kind of give us guidance and give the community about what they expect from us.
Why don't you go through it a little bit, Bobby, and just tell us something that changes?
I'd like to actually ask, uh, Captain, I mean, Chairman, Chief Tender will come up with that, if you don't mind, because he actually was a big part of this, and he'd be glad to answer any kind of questions you might have on some changes.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, Board of Alderman, thank you for this opportunity. We, uh, so as Chief said, we started this process with a, um, luncheon for our business leaders. Uh, some of you were able to attend that. And from there, we did a citizen survey and a spot analysis of our internal stakeholders, our firefighters and captains. And from there, we were able to, our accreditation team was able to come together and create our strategic initiatives for this, basically outlining the roadmap that we're looking at going through um, over the next five years to accomplish our goals and objectives for the fire department. As you can see in here, one of the top priorities that we had, both from our community and from our internal stakeholders, was the wellness of our firefighters. Um, both physical fitness-wise and mental health-wise, to make sure that we're taking care of, of our personnel. Um, the second one that we came up with was our structure and our staff. Our citizens, they want to make sure that we are providing them the equitable and accountable services that we promised. And so they, they asked us to, to take a look at our structure and staffing for that. From there, we were able to, um, look at our community outreach programs. Chief Boyd is very, very, um, supportive of our community outreach, and if any of you have sat in any of his meetings, you know that his, uh, number one priority that he teaches us at the fire department is fire prevention is the key. So that worked right along with our community outreach, getting out, being more involved in the community, looking at, at ways that we can, could carry on that initiative. Our EMS program was something, many of you are aware, we went through accreditation, uh, and we came in accredited fire department back in, uh, July of this year. And one of the things that the peer assessment team and the commissioners, uh, stated to us was that they would like to see more of a formalized EMS program. As we went through the process, our, our citizens, our business leaders, that was also a initiative they would like for us to see as well, and our firefighters would like for us to reeval- reevaluate what we are doing with EMS so that we can provide a better EMS service for our community as well. The fifth thing that we looked at was communications, both our internal communications and, um, selling ourselves to the public, letting the public know what we as a fire department offer them, what we are doing for them right now, and to communicate with them so that we can get ideas of what they might have for us to be able to provide better service and, and community outreach. And finally, we, uh, wanted to take a look at our policies and procedures. Um, the community wants to make sure that, that we have things in line, um, for what we would do in, in different emergencies, different situations. But also our internal stakeholders, those firefighters and captains, wanted us to address, um, different policies as well as update some of the policies that we currently have. So those were our initiatives that, that we came up with, six initiatives. From there, we were able to come up with our goals and the critical tasking that we feel like we would be able to do to accomplish these initiatives. The accreditation team, we then presented it to the command staff of the fire department, and, um, this was approved by the fire department. And the booklet that you have in front of you, you were presenting, is, is the final outcome of this, and we're hoping that tonight, that you will adopt this as we require rescues, um, two thousand twenty-two strategic plan. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
I have a question for you on the community feedback. Was that anonymous, or did they provide information like where they live?
That was anonymous. Uh, one of the things that the accreditation team has looked at is when we did this back in two thousand seventeen, um, we found that there was a lot of people outside of New Bern and Craven County that gave their input. This was more specific, um, we worked with, um, Colleen to make this more specific to our area. Um, so we, we were able to get away from some of those outside sources, seeing what they think we need to be doing, and, and they, um, may or may not know what we offer here. So it was specific to New Bern this time. However, the accreditation team is already working on a process to where we can, can better isolate, um, for example, even with our, our business leaders, one of the things that we presented to command staff was that, you know, maybe we deal with retail, but then we deal with industry, and then we deal with commercial. So we're getting all of those different, um, avenues to look at. So we are looking at ways, but we did not, during this process, we were not able to separate it out into districts or wards or anything like that.
Thank you. Well, you know, I'm really good to, it's really good to see that, you know, that within this plan that you're gonna have more interaction with the public, and I think that's a plus. Um, you want the, the trust of the communities, when you're, you know, the involvement with the communities. And I just know when you come out for National Night Out, how the children are so overwhelmed, they're just with joy of getting on that fire truck. They're maybe a future firefighter for the city of New Bern someday. And I just like that, you know, you got, your firefighter's gonna be more inter- interacting more with the public, and that you're planning on, you know, developing a diversified agency, which is, which is a plus. So I just thank you, Chief Board, and you, sir. Your last name again?
Tender.
Chief Tender? I just thank you and your department for all that you do for the city, and we can't do with, we can't do, we, we can't, the city would not operate without you. As well as, I say the same thing about our police department, cannot operate without our police department as well. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Eric, I'd like to say two things. One, um, I think the fire department's done an excellent job in outreach into the community and listening to the community. I also think it's getting time since Chief Boyd is nearing retirement. I've been trying to talk about it all the time now.
I hope not.
I think it's, well, it's gonna happen sooner than later, I can promise that. How many years he got in now?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one years, so it's one of them things that he can go any day.
Well, I need you to stay for about five more.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. But however, when I retired from the fire department, Chief Boyd was my deputy chief. That position was lost when, when I retired and he became a chief. It's so, it's so very important to have that deputy chief's position so someone can step in when he steps out. Uh, he's probably the largest, one of the largest departments in the city, and as far as daytime staff is concerned, it's him and one other person. Uh, and that, that's, uh, that's a lot of people for two people to manage. So I, I would like to really consider, in this year's upcoming budget, to put that deputy chief's, the position is still there, it's just vacant, this is vacant. I would like for us to be able to put that deputy chief position back and, and actually fund it so, um, we can move forward with the fire department, give the chief some assistance. That being said, I'd like to consider adopting a resolution approving an updated strategic plan for the fire department.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion.
I remember a question I would like to ask, Chief. So Chief, right now, you're the chief, so who, who falls under, under you? The captain or commander or what?
No, right, right now, if I'm, if you look at the hierarchy, it's me. Then it was a deputy chief, but underneath that, you have division chiefs. And division chief, you've got the training division, which is McConnell. Then we have fire prevention division, which is Hill, Fire Marshal Hill. And then we have the battalion chiefs, which are over the shifts, which Tender was over one of the shifts. So that's basically the way the hierarchy works now.
And so they're all cross-training, correct? To some, cross-trained?
Oh, yes. I mean, it's all, you just reason he's here tonight.
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of...
But the problem is, most of them work shift work and not there every day. It may be seven, eight days before you see one of them again.
Well, you was adding on, were we gonna add one in six individuals so that we can better, uh, um, I wouldn't say better, but utilize our, our, uh, firemen for medical response? Can, can we tack that on there too?
Yeah, always. I mean, you know, the mayor has been, been, been talking about running a, what we call in fire service, a flying squad for years. And a flying squad could be, uh, a pickup, as simple as a pickup truck with, um, um, two or three firemen that are EMS certified that can respond to heart attack calls, and also can respond to structural fires or any other type of fires throughout the whole city. You know, and give them additional personnel there.
Definitely, definitely feel we need to, you know, revisit that because that's important, basically, on the statistics that were brought to us during the budget, that most of the calls are more medical, you know what I mean? And that's important and great, um, allocation of funds. But I, I, I agree with the deputy position. I mean, whatever we need to do to make sure it gets funded, there needs to be a replacement. When Foster leaves, we have an assistant city manager.
That's right.
You know, if, I, I don't want Chief to get burnt out to a point where you are gonna retire. We need you to stay...
Well, he's doing a whole lot of work right by himself.
Right, right.
Yeah, and, and you need somebody to, to start learning the ropes.
Well, I definitely, I definitely just support that if we, you know...
You know, this, th- this city is very fortunate that we have a hospital that runs EMS and runs ambulance service. In most cities, the fire department runs that. And I think that we, um, we're very fortunate that we don't have to go through that expense, and as long as the hospital wants to continue running ambulance service, I think they should. But I'm gonna tell you, when you live over, just, just imagine, um, how long it might take for an ambulance to get to a heart attack victim over, even just in hour fifty-five. You, you remember, we all remember what happened at the, uh...
Water plant.
At the water plant, you know? Uh, you know, having that fire department there within two or three minutes and being able to start doing medical work i- is just, is life-saving. And, and I see it, I see them all the time responding into, to Burna where, you know, it may take a few minutes for an ambulance to get there. And they, you know, they come into the Burna for medical emergencies all the time. Uh, and as the Burna gets older, they're gonna get more and more of those calls out there. So there's, there's a lot that we need to think about with the fire department, but I think definitely we need to give Chief Boyd his deputy chief's position back that was only supposed to have lasted for a year or two, and it's been, how long have I been retired now, since two thousand fifteen? So he's been on it that long by himself.
Alright, well, I second, um, the item to move forward.
Hey, we did have motions, so...
We did.
Is any other discussion? CNI, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank Tender.
Thank you.
Let's go to appointments, Alderman Odom.
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
None, sir.
Alderman Ashby?
No, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
And Alderman Bingle?
I have none, but our instruction sheet says we need to appoint, the board needs to appoint somebody to CRISMA, which is the Coastal Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, and, um, it's asking that the board consider appointing Al Kabley, our public works director, because that's usually who sits on that. So I make that motion that this board appoints Al Kabley.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. CNI, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, attorney's report.
Mayor, Mr. Board, one item tonight. Um, we have some unfinished business to clean up regarding the last vote on the MOU. My office controls the flow of legal documents. Um, once the mayor executes documents, I control where they go. Um, very quickly after the last meeting, um, it appeared that the board may want to, um, reflect and reconsider that MOU, so I still have it, I've not forwarded for execution. You have before you a draft MOU that removes all reference to the Union Point Park. I drafted this consistent with the email that I saw, um, which is a, a, a press release of some kind from Colleen regarding Tesla's, um, uh, request to withdraw from the park and the mayor's statement in support of that request. Um, so we've removed the section regarding the park, we've removed all references to the park, and, um, as of five o'clock, Tesla's attorney has, um, approved this draft, um, subject to your approval. So if you would like to go forward, um, with this MOU, the board would entertain a motion to rescind the last vote to authorize the mayor to sign the last MOU and approve the resolution before you, which would approve this replacement MOU.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, uh, several call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
No.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Uh, any other attorney business?
No, sir.
Uh, city manager's report?
Got a few things, uh, Mayor. Uh, when the board approved its twenty-twenty-two meeting schedule, um, March eighth was removed from the roster because that was originally scheduled to be election day. Now that the city election has been moved to May seventeenth, it's necessary to make a motion to add that meeting back to the roster if you so desire. Um, the motion should include the date, time, and location.
I make a motion that we reinstate that meeting from March eighth, uh, six o'clock in City Hall.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
All right, any other city manager?
Yes, sir, got a few more things. One, we, we had a bid opening for the City Hall elevator project last Thursday. We only received two bids, so by law, we could not open those. We re-advertised this process and we do have the, uh, bid opening rescheduled for this Thursday. So we will be opening any bids that are received at that time. Uh, we'll review that with the architect. Hopefully, we'll be able to come back at the next board meeting, uh, and give that information to you. Okay. Um, next thing is on March eighth, um, Comfort Air will be installing a new HVAC unit on the side of the old Baxter store on Pollock Street. So they're gonna have a temporary street closure from six-thirty AM to seven-thirty AM on that March, uh, eighth. So we'll, we'll work with them to, to temporarily close that. And Fire Chief also informed me today that the nine-one, nine-eleven memorial will be installed beside the Fireman's Museum on March eighth as well. They're looking at temporarily closing the northbound, um, uh, part of Hancock Street to where they get the crane to unload there.
Uh, no, I think, I think that's changed, Foster.
It's changed.
It's gonna be the southbound lane of Broad Street for, the crane has to set up on Broad Street. We didn't want it set up on Hancock Street, we didn't wanna mess with railroad.
Okay, so that is two, two, two temporary closures are coming up, so we wanted to make you aware of those. Uh, once we have more details, we'll definitely let, let you know and, and Colleen will also inform the public of those. And that's all I have.
Um, could you give us an update on Mark Marietta? I know a lot of folks are asking me about the playground and accessibility and just update us on, on that.
And I, I, I take the full blame for, for this. We've been so busy with some other things. We're getting ready to open that thing up and have a grand opening. Um, and we'll probably make the announcement next week on when that will be. But everything is pretty much done with the exception of installing some signs. Um, and it really looks nice out there. We look forward to having, having the grand opening. We'll probably offer hot dogs to everyone that comes out and, and it'll be a good event.
Well, great. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Let's go to new business, Alderman Bingle.
Nothing tonight, sir, but I would like to, uh, thank the many people who have reached out to me and support, uh, kind words, uh, respectful words. And I just wanna thank, this is a wonderful community we live in and appreciate those who do their homework and, uh, get correct information. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderwoman Harris?
Yes, um, Mr. Foster, can you explain what the process is gonna be for, um, hiring the redevelopment executive director?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we, uh, we are, we have just about finished with, with the recruitment brochure, but we also reached out to the, uh, the chairman of the development, redevelopment commission days. Wanted to see if they'd be interested in working with us on getting a, an outside consultant to, a headhunter, so to speak, to help advertise this position and help vet this, this position. So we anticipate the process will, will take several months, but the goal is to get the best possible candidate to help the redevelopment commission achieve their goals and objectives.
Okay, and during the interview process, will Sabrina, me, and, um, Best be able to interact with the interview process?
So that is something that our consultant, whoever we use, will be doing that. So they'll, they'll be happy to take your input and work with you on that.
Okay, and then, uh, my other question was, um, what do we need to do to have the school of government come to abort me and then explain, um, code of ethics?
Code of ethics?
Yes, 'cause I, I have community members that reach out in concern of things that have been put out there um, in regards to, um, financial ethic violation or just ethics in, in general. Um, very concerning and, um, I want facts to be out there so that there's a true understanding. Um, so I need to know what we need to do to have someone come out here and explain that process. Um...
We'll, we'll reach out to school of government tomorrow and see if we can schedule someone to come in and make a presentation.
Okay, and would you be able to explain, um, Attorney Davis, uh, what an ethics violation is so people can understand?
Well, we have two main statutes, um, and to give this, you're gonna have a robust discussion. If we get a professor from the school of government, they can take a deeper dive. But, but there are two general principles we deal with. One is in one sixty-eight dash seventy-five as a state statute that starts with the presumption that you have a duty to vote, right? That's contrary to what most people think. You have run for office, the people have given you power to make decisions on behalf of the city, and they expect you to vote publicly and make those decisions. So with that in mind, the rules make it very difficult for you to go take cover and not vote.
Correct.
Right? It works to your political advantage sometimes to not vote on tough issues. So we start with the presumption that you're gonna vote. The exception is if you have a financial interest, a direct financial interest in the matter that you are voting on.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And it has to be unique and specific to you. For example, all of you have a, have an interest in the annual budget. Things happen in that budget. Streets get paved that you drive on, trees get planted in your community. So all of you benefit when you adopt the annual budget. That is not a conflict, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you're looking for an issue that you are voting on specifically that applies to you or an immediate family member.
Mm-hmm.
Common examples we see across the state are, um, a spouse of a public official owns an insurance company. And that company bids on city insurance.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a direct financial interest on which you would be precluded from voting.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So that's one sixty-eight dash seventy-five. We then go to the criminal statutes in fourteen dash two thirty-four. And those have very specific requirements about what kind of direct financial interest
Mm-hmm.
requires disclosure and precludes that person from voting.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's very similar, but a little more precise. Um, and what, what it's looking to is whether you own an interest or have a family member that owns an interest of ten percent or more in the entity that is a subject to a contract that you are voting on. If you have that ownership interest, as I was describing at the last meeting,
Mm-hmm.
you have a duty to disclose. I would argue you have a duty under both statutes, whether your interest is a half a percent or ten percent. If you have an interest in a contract before the board, you are, you are wise to disclose it to the board and then we can address whether or not you can be excused from voting based on that interest. From the criminal statute, you disclose it. If you don't, it's a crime. And more interestingly, if you don't disclose it, the contract is void.
Mm-hmm.
Meaning at any point in the future, if it's discovered that you voted on a matter in which you had an interest, the contract stops and it's void, so it harms every party to that contract.
Okay.
Those are the two big principles.
And what would be your legal definition of a conflict of interest?
Those two things.
So there's no other form of conflict of interest for an individual that sits on this board and thinks that they vote on in interactions that they do?
No, ma'am.
Legally?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, um, I'm, so this, this is where I'm confused on where there's transparency because when actions are taken on this board, you know, citizens come, whether it's in my ward or not. So, uh, article was written about a specific alderman, um, Sabrina Bingle, and it was not an opinion, it was all facts of information because of a FOIA request.
Okay.
So if we were voting on a MOU with the Kessler group?
Right.
She sent an email six days after she purchased land over in a neighborhood where she showed them you should purchase this waterfront.
Right.
If they were to purchase this waterfront and build it up, the tax value will raise. How is that not a, a financial gain? How is that not unethical to email them property over in the area where you purchased to a group that the city was having a discussion with, I was not included, a discussion with in regards to Union Point, uh, Talbot's building and the Elks building? I don't, I don't understand and other people who are, maybe are afraid to come and ask these questions to aldermen don't understand how a, a, a government entity or even the school of government could not see that as a conflict of interest. I, I don't understand that. And tha- that's the reason why I need the school of government to come and so citizens can understand because that's not transparency. That's, to me, there's a lack of integrity in this situation. And I don't understand why we do not address this, why we personally don't have a policy. We make policy for social media and, and everything else, but we don't have a policy in regards to how there is lack of integrity in this, in this process. That's the reason why we have the FOIA, uh, FOIA, like, people can pull this information and it was not opinion, it was fact. But it was, it, it was okay that that happened.
But you don't have the rest of the facts, unfortunately, Alder, Alderwoman Harris, you don't know all the facts. First of all, that piece of property, we were co- was owned by the New Bern Preservation Foundation who contacted us almost a year prior to purchase it because it had been sitting there empty and we owned the surrounding property.
And you purchased it for twenty thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Which originally sold for two hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 you're, you're, it's, it's a, there was a house that was demolished on there. The house was falling down, it was called the, um,
Mamie Sadler.
Mamie Sadler store and it was torn down. This is ridiculous, I shouldn't have to do this. But I will because this is, this is, and had Ms. Card had the decency to ask me this prior to posting the article, I could have sent her to the people who could have confirmed this. They came to us and said, would you please purchase it? Asked us to go through a process, we did, closed everything. It took a year almost to close the piece of property. Had nothing to do coincidentally that it closed a week prior to me sending the email. The Kesslers asked what waterfront property is there available in the city of New Bern? So that was the piece on North Craven Street. That's the biggest piece of property empty. I just passed it along. I don't own it, it's privately owned, it has nothing to do with the city of New Bern. How does that have anything to do with my job as an alderman? I, I, I want you to know that, that our family has lived in that neighborhood for over one hundred years. They do own property in that neighborhood, have been there for all those years. You know, if there's something that happens in your neighborhood or whatever, it helps everybody. We, to try to put those two things together is just nitpicking at stuff. For, for what reason, I still don't understand that I'm being picked on, but that's okay because I'm here, I'm going to serve, I'm going to continue to serve with integrity. I've done nothing illegal or immorally wrong. And we have the city attorney make that statement. All the other stuff that you have read and was put in that article by Ms. Card was just things to pull out of the air. As far as the sidewalk that she mentioned, the thirty-eight thousand dollars, that was, and I have a letter that says, staff determined what sidewalks they were going to use. The sidewalks were by the Salvation Army, nowhere near my property. So again, i- if you wanna, if you really want to save your, use your energy for doing something, we have people who need homes. We have people who are in need of so many things in our city. Let's join, give me your energy to start working in the community that you represent. Let's not get away with this.
Actually, is that the, is that the A-Rant? Excuse, excuse me, just Ms. Card. Is that the A-Rant property that you referred?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm the one that actually called Kessler and had him and got him in touch with the owner of that property.
But the email showed that she emailed the link.
I did because they asked me to send them the package that Alderman Astor made the contact for me because he knew the owner, again.
Okay, i- if it was anybody else, they would be on the front page news. That, that's, that's, that's the concern. It's not transparent. It, it's not transparent. I don't, I don't care how you label it out, it's not transparent. And you know that you can't come to me, Sabrina, about what my energy is used for because I fight for public ha- uh, for, for affordable housing, but
So let's get to it.
you're out here working deals to bring a, 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 a hotel downtown.
So that we can make money to spend in the community.
But no, thi- this, you always wanna make money to spend in the community and ain't have, and seen nothing in how many years?
Cause guess what?
We changed the name to Greater Five Points using the CNI and where's the benefit for that community? We're gonna, we, you, you voted, yes, it has to be torn down. But the key word when you talk about this is market rent. Don't we have enough market rent, um, homes right now? We still have people living from Florence that have tarps on their house.
That is correct.
So we sit here in these side deals and make these conversations about giving incentives for hotels to come down here, but we have people at the redevelopment that had to climb up a mountain to come down just to bring some sort of affordable housing in here.
Alderwoman Harris, we are on a new business.
And I, and I'm discussing, I'd be right, I do, I'm discussing on the new business.
So this is new business.
And, and going into the redevelopment.
If I'm gonna be attacked, then I need to be able to address it and it's, it's.
It's not an attack. I have a right to ask the question. I'm not the one attacking you. But when people come to me, I have a right to, I have one more thing to, to ask.
But I, and it's all women's, uh, Harris's new business.
Thank you.
Anything on her new business?
Right. The next thing is, is when we talk about the redevelopment, I'm not sure how many times I have to put it on record, but the redevelopment was created and appointed so that these individuals could be on the commission and do the work that's in, that's needed with the CNI that was voted on, right? The three of us were, one, two, and five are ex-officios, right? I'm, I don't have to go to these meetings. I don't have to go to these meetings because anything that that board does, under my understanding, uh, Scott, help me if I'm wrong, they still have to bring it back to us for us to vote on, correct?
For certain real estate projects, they do.
Okay, and then wh- what about for real estate projects and what else? Because when we approved the plan, that was something that, that we had to, to vote on. Majority of the things that they do, the board has to vote on.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so what, what does the board, what does the board vote on when it comes to the redevelopment? Because if we go back to them meetings, that's not what was stated. It was stated that whatever they do, they still have to come back to the board to, to get a vote on.
Yes, ma'am. Well, they don't have any mon- if they spend their money, they have to come back to you for money.
Mm-hmm.
So money's a big thing.
Money.
Um, sale of real property.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, that's pretty much it.
And the plan that we voted on.
Which is already done.
Right, okay. So unless I'm needed at the meeting, I let these individuals do what they need to do in regards to what they're, what, what they have a passion to do in the committee. I don't feel like I have to be at those meetings. So I just, I just wanna make that clear because.
Are you on the committee?
I'm, I'm a ex-officio. I don't sit in. I go to the meetings when they ask me to go to the meetings. But I just wanna make that clear because, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna make that clear just so that you understand, Mr. Mayor, that I don't go to those meetings all the time, you understand? Um, I go to the meetings when I'm needed and, and, and that's it. Um, are we allowed to discuss the recent information that happened with the redevelopment, um?
We're, we're on the new business.
Right, under new business, so.
If there's some new business.
Right, so are, are we allowed to state the information I received in the email that two people resigned?
Uh, Mr. Davis is on new business.
Right, so how are we gonna go about, about appointing those individuals to the redevelopment?
Thank you, Father.
How are we gonna go about putting out that information that two people resigned from the board and we need two people to fill those positions? When are we gonna put that information out?
Well, there's a meeting tomorrow night.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, you should speak to Chairwoman Lee because the two individuals may attend.
Okay.
So you should, you should speak to her, so I don't, they are having a meeting tomorrow night. We're gonna talk to the redevelopment commission and, um, certainly you want to come back.
But the, the board does have the authority to appoint those individuals, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Astor, do you have any new business tonight?
Can't do that. Nothing tonight, sir.
Uh, Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
And Alderman Best?
Yes, I do. Um, I would like to, I guess the, um, the litter signs, those litter signs that is erected around the different areas of the city. Um, is that something comes through, um, Public Works?
It should be Public Works.
Okay, can I, it's, it's just seems to be a problem with litter all over the city and, um, I know me and my husband and some other people have come out and start picking up litter. And is there a way I can have a sign put out on Highway fifty-five?
Oh, yes, I was over there today. That is.
On Highway fifty-five, yes.
They, they may have to work with DOT, but we'll get public works to start working on that.
Okay. Uh, well, and the reason why I said the city is because that is the city limits.
Right.
It may be a state highway, but it is the city limits.
That's correct.
So that's why I wanted to get a litter sign put in place.
Okay.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Highway fifty-five?
Yes, sir. Um, and the other thing that I want to say, I have to concur with Alderman Odom for as the redevelopment commission is concerned. I too am an ex-official member. I do not go to those meetings all the time, but I do watch those meetings, okay? I view those meetings. And I feel the same as she does. We as a board, we charge that commission to do a job, so I don't feel that I need to be, be there to every meeting, Mayor, to conduct business with that redevelopment commission. So I just, I'm like her, I wanna make that clear. That's the reason why I'm not there at all meetings. But moving forward, I think it is, it would behoove me to attend some of those meetings. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Odom?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, do we need any closed session?
Yes, Mayor, uh, I need you briefly in a closed session, so at one forty-three, three times out of eight-six to discuss a personnel matter.